Charlie? Is anybody in there?
There is.
Good evening. The September 19th meeting of the Planning Commission is now in session. Could you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kate, could you call the roll call, please?
Gary Cunningham?
Here.
Patty Crone? Doug Bryson?
Here.
Bruce Cunningham? Excuse me, Bruce Robinson?
Bruce Robinson is here.
Thank you. Sean Keer?
Here.
Miles Schlesinger?
Here.
And Steve Griffiths?
Here.
Thank you.
Before we begin tonight's meeting, I'd like to encourage everyone who's watching tonight and who's in the audience to visit the Imagine Lincoln City website at www/imaginelincolncity.org. Imagine Lincoln City is a community visioning program with one main goal, to create a guiding vision for the way our community looks, feels, and functions over the next 20 years, based on input from all of us who live, work, and play and visit here. The ideas we get from the visioning project will help us as we update the city's comprehensive plan. We encourage you to tell us your ideas by visiting the website. Click on the link that says "I have an idea." We look forward to hearing your big ideas for Lincoln City's future, so thank you very much for doing that. So do we have any agenda changes or revisions this evening?
No, we don't.
All right. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes? Do we have a motion to approve them from our September 5th meeting?
My motion, we approve the September 5th minutes.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 The minutes have been approved. Are there any public comments on non-agenda items or matters not involving a public hearing? Please limit your comments to three minutes, and keep in mind that you're being broadcast on live television. Yes, we have somebody. Please identify yourself. You don't need to tell us your address.
Mr. Barrett. I think, um, the thing I wanted to say tonight to the council here is, while you're going through your discussions and decisions tonight, it comes to thought to me that how much cost -- I'm a general contractor, so I build for a living. That's what I do. And I look at the cost of housing, as I look at the affordable housing things that the city's trying to do, and contemplate, how do I help the community get into affordable housing? One of the things that becomes kind of a sore thumb that sticks out is how much per square foot a house is loaded with things and ordinances that the city has passed, that the layer after layer of things that the city wants done. And I don't know if anybody's ever really done a study, if you will, or evaluated in any way. At what point do we keep loading the building industry and the housing of our communities? Do we get past that bell curve, where the added dollar has a diminishing return on the effect that it has, the positive effect that it has on the citizens of our city? So I just wanted to point that out, is as you go through, look tonight, deciding to make decisions on where the city's going to go and to make suggestions to the city council on what they should do, keep conscious that everything that you're doing is adding costs on top of costs. And even though what we're talking about in specific tonight may only be a small incremental increase, and it doesn't look like much, when you start adding them up, you're adding, you know, if I was just to go out there and say it costs $100 a square foot to build a house in Lincoln City, I would venture to say, and this is just my estimate, $30 per square foot is from the city's ordinances and things that are loaded onto the building of a house. So as you're looking at the zoning, you're looking at the things that we're doing, keep in mind, bear in mind, that this is having an impact. And that's all I really wanted to say tonight.
Thank you very much. Well, any questions?
Yes, I'm, Mr. Barrett, um, is there particular ordinances that you find?
Not really.
Just a --
Just in general, just in general, a consciousness of going, yes, we are adding to it, and as we centralize the city, you know, to get people from place to place, how does this, as far as the cost that we're loading, affect the community on the other? Is the benefit that we're getting from each one of these helping or hindering in the long run? What is the effect of that? Is it, is it all positive, or is it somehow mitigated down the line?
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Barrett, I'm sorry. I was curious, would you have a solution or a building list that could complete affordable housing that would meet rents between $300 and $600 a month?
$300 and $600 a month is, you're looking at multifamily. You're not going to be able to get an individual house that somebody's going to get into.
No, no, I mean, I'm thinking about apartments. I'm thinking about, yeah.
Apartments? $300 to $600 a month is a hard one to hit into our market. Depends on what type of, what is the taxing and this type of thing. I don't think you're going to hit that. I really don't. Unless you have a high density, very dense, you might be able to get it down to the $600 range in Lincoln City. But you're going to have to pack it densely. It's not something that you're going to have a, you're not going to have views, you're not going, you're going to have to utilize properties that are undesirable.
Sure.
And I can see it happening, but it's a very, you're going to get a very small square footage for that price.
Sure, sure, that's, that's fair enough. But, I mean, when we, when I hear affordable workforce housing, those are the numbers that come to my mind, since the, you know, the average Lincoln County worker is bringing, netting $1,200 to $1,400 a month, and paying $1,000 of that in rent is not affordable. You know, I'm trying to fit into that 33% of take-home salary for affordable rent, and which used to be commonplace and is now a fairy tale.
It is.
And I would love to work with a, you know, see if there's some way we can find a way to balance that.
Well, I don't think that you really want to go there, but, you know, the taxing situation and all, and what I'm just talking about, a lot of the loaded costs. When I build a building, you know, I'm don't, I'm sending money to the county for the school system, I'm sending money in all kinds of directions that really shouldn't be loaded on building a house, but it is. You know, when we connect to the sewer and water system, how much of that money's actually going to the sewer and water system? Are we going to parks with it and all these other various places that the money goes to? It's kind of all loaded onto the building industry in general, because it seems to be a good place that, you know, oh, that people that build new houses can afford it. And what that ultimately ends up doing is it takes the folks that are in the lower brackets and pushes them right out of it. We're not even going to consider them because we're loading the cost for the people who can afford it.
Which is hardly anybody.
Thank you. You've given us a lot to think about, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
We're now at five on our agenda, final orders, resolution, and written communications. We do have a final order to approve tonight. It's 5.1, final order 2017-02, Portwood at All, Appealing SPR. 2017-01, Not Ransom. Do we have a motion to approve the final order?
My motion, we approve the final order 2017-02.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Do we need to take a roll call vote on this? Huh? Let's do that.
Robinson?
Yes.
Keer?
No.
Bryson?
Yes.
Schlesinger?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
Crone? And Griffiths?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thank you. All right, we now, um...
Hold up. I think that your planning commission rules require the no votes to explain.
All right, um, Sean?
I, I have a hard time with the shared parking spaces. I think that's going to cause long-term repercussions that nobody's really going to want to deal with then, so I think we should deal with them now and prevent some, some issues that could come up. I couldn't be specific, but I think sharing parking spaces with a dentist's office that has compressed gases and whatnot in there becomes more of a danger than a benefit to a neighborhood.
All right, and Patty?
Well, Sean, this is, Sean, the words were out there now. Um, I think that the question was, have they addressed, and there's a lot of inattention which, I mean, is specific to the questions.
Thank you, yeah. All right, it is now 6:12 PM. The continued public hearing for filed ZIOA 2017-03 is now open. This public hearing concerns a city-initiated proposal to amend Title 17 zoning in Chapter 17.08 to insert additional definitions related to transportation, to permit transportation uses as defined in all zones, to clarify requirements for transportation-related infrastructure improvements with development, and to replace the option of deferred improvement agreements with an option for payment of fees in lieu of improvements. The public hearing on this matter was opened on June 30th. A staff report was presented, and staff requested the continuance. The hearing was continued, and the record remains open for public comment. The planning commission's role in the legislative process is to consider any written or oral comments or testimony, as well as information from staff, and present a recommendation to the city council, who will hold an additional public hearing. The city council may adopt the planning commission recommendation, may adopt a different recommendation, or may take other action. At the June 30th hearing, no commissioners declared a conflict of interest. I'll ask again if there, if there are any conflicts of interest. Saying none, I'll continue. The substantive criteria that apply to this hearing include the statewide planning goals, the city's comprehensive plan, and the applicable provisions of the city's zoning ordinance. Comments and testimony should be directed to these criteria or to other criteria that you believe apply to the subject of this hearing. Before the staff presents an updated report, I'll summarize the adopted public hearing procedures. The staff will present a report and respond to any planning commission, planning commission questions. After that, any person may speak up to three minutes. If the planning commission has questions, your time responding to any questions will not be counted in your time limit. If you wish to speak, please write your name and mailing address clearly on the sign-up lists at the entrance. Please speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name only. If you also have written testimony to submit into the record, please provide a copy to our recorder. Will the staff please present its report?
Thank you. Well, I already have presented most of this at the June meeting, but it has been a few months, so I thought I would just kind of run through it for you. First of all, we adopted the 2015 TSP in 2016, I believe, but, or maybe it was 2015, it was at the end of the year. And we had all these different groups and people involved. In 2000, yes, okay, so we adopted it in 2015, and about a year ago, we adopted Part 1 of the TSP amendments. And these were for the purpose of making sure that that plan then becomes implemented. We replaced the previous comp plan goals with those from the TSP, and we made changes to Titles 12, 16, and 17. Now, in Part 2, we, last time, we talked through the definitions. We added the transportation as permitted uses in the 11 zoning districts, so that takes up a bulk of the ordinance. And then 13, we proposed changes and adds to 1750 to 230, which is public infrastructure improvements, having to do with transit and primarily. And so these, I don't think we need to talk about anymore, but if you have questions about it, we certainly can. All right, so then, the part that bogged us down last time was this discussion about whether we should be collecting deferred improvement agreements, which we've done in the past, but have never used to make improvements, or whether we should switch to fees in lieu of improvements. And since we discussed it in June, the staff has gotten together and talked about this, and we have decided that we would like to put new, or language in the code that does not necessarily exclude deferred improvement agreements, or necessarily go with fees in lieu, but to offer, you know, small alternatives. So, and I have to mention, I think, I did do a memo to the commission, and I did, in the last paragraph, show you what that new wording would be. So the staff report was originally prepared, and I just basically included that a second time, but the memo is really the update. So what, what we are proposing is that instead of just saying simply a deferred improvement agreement, we're adding this language, fees in lieu agreement or other cost allocation agreement, in a form approved by the city manager, and then it goes on from there. At, originally, we had in the ordinance more detail about what the fee in lieu of improvements might include, but since we're now offering options, I don't think it's necessary to spell that out in here. We would actually spell that out in our deferred improvement agreement that might specify fees in lieu, or most likely what, what I believe Public Works favors is having, using our local improvement districts to make improvements. And in doing that, we can focus the money that we do raise through fees or deferred improvement agreements on projects that benefit the properties in a reasonable way that also benefits the rest of the neighborhood. So for instance, you know, the concern always is, we don't want to require somebody to put in sidewalk in front of their house if none of the neighbors have sidewalk, because then it's, it's really pretty useless. We would rather maybe find those areas that we identified in the walking and biking plan or in the transportation system plan where we particularly need sidewalks, maybe on a heavier used street in the same neighborhood around the corner, and then put together an LID, local improvement district, that would gather in all those people benefiting and have it, have contributions spread to all those properties. And in doing that, then we would utilize those deferred improvement agreements or fees in lieu that we collect. So that is, that is our proposal now. We have updated our proposal to include this language. And I don't know if our city attorney has anything to add to that. If you do, I, no, okay. So I bet you have questions about that.
Any questions from the commissioners?
Patty?
You want to always be the follow me first. I'm sure others have questions too. Who would write these agreements? Who would take the lead in that? Would that be something that you expect the developer to come forward with, or something that the city would have templates? I mean, because the numbers, I would think the numbers could be a steady.
Well, the city, the city has a form that we want to update to reflect this new wording. And the kinds of costs that we would be including are those that, you know, I spelled that out in the original ordinance. It would be like, you know, these are all the things that, that go into the costs of building a sidewalk, for instance. For a local impro, and we haven't, we haven't worked out that out yet, and that's something our city attorney will work on in updating that form. But we want it to reflect these different options, but also in a way that we can call them in, use, utilize them in, say, a local improvement district.
For example, is that installation, including engineer and the design, is determined by the city engineer? Is that the city, is that paying the city engineer for his time to design and install? Or is that an engineer that developer can bring in of his choice? I mean, I mean, there seem to be a lot of variables.
Well, if we're doing a local improvement district, it would be the city engineer, our city engineer, or a consultant that they have hired specifically for this. But we have several engineers on our staff, and so they do a lot of our own design work, and that does save us money, rather than hiring consultants all the time. With the local improvement districts, we would be designing the project, and a project that city council agrees is something that would be well-spent money, and it would be something that then we would spread contribution, not just to those adjacent, but also to those benefiting property owners, so it spreads it over a larger area. Yes.
So those, I just want to carry this through. So we could do a local improvement district to say, put curbs and gutters in the neighborhood?
Yes.
And people who are there, um, where your employees, as for being?
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Yes, yes. And, and when, our local improvement district process is very well-defined. We just did one for installing sewer in a, in a lake, lakefront area. And as maybe you're aware, you know, many hearings, many letters to the property owners, many discussions and negotiations. So, yes, that's, that's basically how it works. Lots of public hearings and opportunities to discuss it and, and talk about what works and what doesn't.
Anyone else? Could you explain something to me? So if I'm a developer and I pay fees in lieu of the deferred agreement, and later on, five or 10 years from now, I determine that my, my property, my development would benefit from an LID, whatever that happens to be?
Yes.
So I would not be taxed at that time, wouldn't have to pay anything, right? Because I've already paid into that.
I, I think that's going to depend. I, I think that, you know, we can do an LID at any time, and we can assess the benefited property owners, all of or a portion of the cost of the, of the improvement. If the improvement that's being done in the LID corresponds to the fee in lieu that the developer paid, yes, I think you would get credit for whatever the fee in lieu is that you paid. I'm not sure that if the cost had gone up, that you couldn't be assess the difference between the cost of your fair share today versus what you paid with the fee in lieu. We could, we could give them credit and say regardless that you've paid, and you never have to pay again, but we could also, and I think that's one of the issues that staff has with the fee in lieu, is that things change over time, and so it's difficult to estimate what would be your fair share when you're not going to build the improvement for five or six years. So that's, that's part of the difficulty of implementing a fee in lieu. Doing a local improvement district is actually all about doing a fair share apportionment among the benefited property owners at the time that you do the improvement. So there's the initial stages where we're just forming it, and then there's a final assessment, which is done by ordinance, after the improvement is completed and all the costs are known. So it gets very definitive about what everybody's fair share is. It's hard to estimate now in a fee in lieu calculation what your fair share is going to be if the improvement is going to be built 10 years from now, so.
It would seem that there's not much of an incentive to pay fee, fees in lieu of...
Unless we created an incentive by saying, and again, this has not been determined, we, we could say, once you pay this amount, you're done.
The, um...
Oh, excuse me.
The, okay, I'm going to, I put up here the map of where we have deferred improvement agreements. Typically, this is, well, then this does not apply to subdivisions or planned unit developments, because when we're getting a whole new development, then providing the, the infrastructure is part of that. And so basically what we're talking about are infill lots, and those areas that, where development has, has grown up around it, and, and then somebody's coming in. Now, so, so you can see, we have a smattering all over town of these individual lots that have, have signed deferred improvement agreements, rather than put in the sidewalk or the curb and gutter or whatever, half-street improvements at the time. So the other thing that I have in here, and this one is quite small, but this is comparing the subdivisions to the, to the deferred improvement agreements. And where we have subdivisions, we have sidewalks, for example, and the red lines are the sidewalks. Where we have deferred improvement agreements, we haven't used them and nothing's happened. And, you know, we, we made it very clear in our walking and biking plan and in the TSP that we don't need sidewalks on every single street, but that we want to prioritize those streets with higher traffic, higher usage by pedestrians and bicycles. So, so this is our hope, is that we can use the deferred improvement agreements in anything we collect from now on, either fees or other deferred improvement agreements, in, in the LID process to gain support and finance that.
Patty?
Why would you need to use it as LID support? Couldn't, couldn't you simply use it as, I guess, sort of analogous to off-site mitigation, where the fee in lieu is paid to the city, and the city uses that money, where the, you know, western, the most efficient use of it is at the time, and continues to run in the wrong direction? So the people, if, you know, the developer, you know, when they have a half a sidewalk in front of their house, that amount of money could be used off-site to maybe...
Well, that's exa, well, that's exactly what we want to do. The wording of the past deferred improvement agreements might not clearly allow for that. They might, and I'm not sure, I haven't, I haven't gone back and read through them, and they may all differ, but if they are saying, we are accepting deferred improvement agreements so that when we put sidewalk on your street, you know, we, we call it in and we'll use it. But that, exactly, that may never happen, yet, you know, just around the corner, on the busier street, we really need sidewalk, and so we would like to have an opportunity through an LID to say to that property owner, here's our plan. We want to put sidewalk on homes, or, or, you know. And, you know, so, so you have signed a deferred improvement agreement, and we will, and, and if you participate in the LID willingly, then, you know, we get rid of the deferred improvement agreement, and you don't have that hanging on your title, for one thing. So that's a positive. And it also then helps us move ahead and get things done. We wouldn't have to have deferred improvement agreements or fees in lieu in order to do a LID, but because we have so many of them already that have, are basically a commitment for them to participate in the construction of infrastructure, you know, we'd like to direct those, be able to direct those towards an LID, where the whole neighborhood then is in agreement that, yes, this is the best place to put sidewalk or a bike path or, or curb and gutter. this is the best place to put sidewalk, or a bike path, or curb and gutter, and then go from there.
When I was developing property in Tigard, we paid a fee in lieu of putting in sidewalks and curbs because the city wanted some flexibility. And eventually, the sidewalk was going to be put into the frontage property. But my recollection is, it might be 10 years down the way, the cost is going to go up, but we were charged just a flat fee. So we didn't have any liability for.
Future.
Future inflation costs. Is that what you're talking about here? Or are you planning on going back to the property owner, like in my case, which I don't own the property anymore, I sold it for housing?
Right, well, and that is an issue, because properties do change ownership. Presumably, you know, when they collected your fees in lieu, they put it into an account that gained interest over time, and then was still enough when it was finally spent to cover the cost. With an LID, and like I said, you know, some of the participants in the LID maybe have never, their houses have been there long enough that they never paid fees in lieu, or signed a deferred improvement agreement. But they would still be asked to participate. And the costs when you do an LID are assigned based on your proximity to the improvement, and, you know, some other factors. And that way, it's spread over the whole benefiting area. And how that's assigned, you know, is part of that preparation of the local improvement district document, and the subject of all the hearings. So isn't that right, Richard?
Yes.
Yeah.
If, you know, again, the LID is a very well-defined process. And our deferred improvement agreement is basically consent. It's the equivalent of a consent to a petition for an LID. So we're basically getting you to agree ahead of time that you would consent to an LID, which is really just a fair share determination in the engineering report of how to allocate the costs among the benefited property owners. The issue about paying a fee in lieu, and then later on, 10 years later, the improvement is being built, will someone come back to you and say, we need more money? That's something that has not been addressed in the ordinance. If you want to make a recommendation on that, that's fine. We'd be happy to pass that along to the city council if you think that, you know, that should be it. Or if you think you should get credit for any fee in lieu toward your LID assessment later on, that's fine too, we'll pass it along. But it hasn't actually been, not in the language, the recent language or in the existing language in the ordinance, it does not appear to be addressed. So if you want to recommend something, you can.
I would think that it should be addressed. I'm not sure which way it should be written, whether to, that's the fee that's going to be allocated, and the city would absorb some of the increase in costs, or whether you should go back to the people. But I think it should be addressed now so that developers can know what their liability is.
Any further questions? Patty? We'll get to that, we will.
If you want to just give us a recommendation, yes, make it a credit that runs with the land, or make it that that's the entire obligation of that property owner. It's one or the other. It's either going to be subject to, you'll get credit for what you paid, but if the cost is more, you may be allocate, you may be assessed that additional cost.
Can I ask, how is fee in lieu determined now? What that actually would be if I were developing, building a home?
Well, no, and we haven't been doing this. We've been doing the deferred improvement agreements. But talking with the city engineer, these are some of the things that I have on the screen right now, that would go into fees in lieu. And I can call out some of them, or you can just read through that.
Any further question?
And, Richard, do you want to say, oh, he went away. Richard, do you want to say something about the deferred improvement agreement itself and the form that we use? Did you say that the council approves the form of the deferred improvement agreement?
I'm not aware that the council has approved the form. I've only really just recently looked at it. That's been in use for quite a long time, but it wasn't a document that I drafted. It does appear to contain consent to an LID, in addition to an agreement to construct the improvements on the frontage of the property. So in answer to your question about just how, you know, loose is this in terms of assigning, where are the benefited improvements? It's not very loose right now. But one of the reasons why I asked for this agreement is to make it more flexible. We still have to basically be able to make the argument that it is an improvement which benefits the property. You can't take someone's money and then build an improvement on the other side of town, has to have a relationship. Frontage improvements obviously would. But in addition to that, it runs with the land and talks about the maintenance of the improvements and city lien. But I recommend that when we use a standard form, we at least put it in front of the city council and say, here is our city standard form of whatever, easement, or LID, or consent, or whatever it is. And get them to approve it so that we don't get accused of bait and switch when somebody comes in and says, this isn't the agreement that Joe Developer signed. I, you know, I have a copyright here. So we like to try to get the forms approved. And that's something you can do or not do. I just recommend doing it because I'd like to have them available and published and promulgated by us ahead of time in some official recognition that that is the official form.
Gary, did you have a question? Any further questions from commissioners? Thank you, Deborah.
Thank you.
So now's the time for public comment and testimony. Please state your name on it. I don't think we have any, anybody testifying this evening. If there is any person in the audience who did not sign up but wishes to speak, please raise your hand. Is there any comment from representatives of public agencies saying none? If there is no further comment, is there a motion to close the public hearing and the record?
I move we close the public hearing and the record.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 The record and the public hearing have been closed. So what is the pleasure of the commission? Is there a motion to forward a recommendation to the city council?
A motion to forward the motion as written to the city council for their approval, I guess. I'll remove my motion.
You're removing your motion?
Yes, so we can discuss inserting this, I guess, right?
I would agree with Patty's comment on it. I think the fee should be what it is. And I would think that the city engineer can make an estimate of what the particular sidewalk and curb should be, the half-street improvement, whatever it is, that will benefit the property over a period of time. And then that should be the fee, in my opinion, that is charged for the fee in lieu of the work.
Any further comments?
I have a question. I think you discussed it already. When these LIDs are created, and you, I guess, say, these people are similarly. Yeah, affected, and thereby they're all in this LID. And once they've been put in an LID and they've paid this fee, they can't ever be put into some other LID that also is similarly affected, and thereby get stuck for another improvement.
Well, yes, they could. I mean, they could, because with LIDs, it could, you could have an LID for sewer, and then you could have one for sidewalks. And then you could, you know, so what I'm saying.
Let me restructure this. If they were on an LID, that there was a sidewalk that was going to get it put in, curb and gutter was going to be put in, sewer was going to be put in, and they wanted to do it on a main road, and these people were close to them, and they all had water, sewer, but not necessarily sidewalk, curb. To get put in that LID, that road gets its curb, gutter, sewer, sidewalk, could they get put into another one that would cover any of those items ever again?
Well, yes, but they would have to go through the same process. I mean, and maybe at some point in the future, maybe the density increases, or, you know, there's needs change, priorities change, and they want to do something else. And yes, they could. But it would require another process, an extensive process, of notice and that kind of thing. And if, and if all the neighbors said, you know, no, we don't like this, we don't think it's necessary, you know, then it's up to the council to say, no. And I don't know those rules about the process for an LID as much as the Public Works Department, because they've been through it very recently with this one near the lake. But it's, you know, it's not ruling out any option for additional improvements in the future that might want to use LIDs.
I guess, I don't want to get a property owner into a position where they've paid for, as part of a group, that sidewalk and that curb and that stuff with their money, and now they don't have one in front of their house.
And so they get mail for that.
I think, yeah, I think for me, the question is, what are you getting for your fee in lieu? And how is that defined, and how will you know? How will that be controlled going forward?
Okay, the Public Works Department would like to define, and, you know, with other staff's input, would like to define certain projects for all the different areas in town. And we'll use a lot of the information from the walking and biking plan and the TSP to do that. Because in both of those documents, we have prioritized projects. And so this is the concept here for using all these DIAs that are out there, that we can define a definite project, and then we can, you know, basically start the process of an LID by describing how, what those costs would include, how those costs would be distributed over the neighborhood. And so that is the next step here. But in order to do an LID, we have to, you know, we have to go through all that process and that work of developing those projects before we can start assigning costs. That is the tricky part, then, when you are talking about fees in lieu. How do you, how do you assign or collect fees in lieu when you, before you've identified your project? And so that's why I think they're working on it right now, to develop those specific projects so that they will know what the share should be for an individual property owner who builds from now on.
I'm not sure we should be asking you any more questions since the record is closed.
Oh, well, but I think, you know, well, I guess that's up to you, Richard. But if we're describing our laws.
I mean, telling you about what the law is is okay.
It's fine, yeah. Thank you, Deborah, yeah. So back to our discussion. Any clarification or any new questions?
I'm afraid of that, that you'd be in multiple LIDs over a period of time, paying your share of some improvements that aren't on your property, and thereby you get tagged with another one and another one. I don't like that process at all. But I ask a specific about the same infrastructure. That's the question I ask. Could you end up paying another fee for the same infrastructure you paid a previous fee for? And she said yes. That's my objection. And maybe that was not understood properly, but that's what I was asking. And if they build, you're here, they build over here, you're part of that group, you pay to support it. Then they build over here, and they make you part of that group, and you pay to support it. And you still don't have that infrastructure in front of your house, but you've paid to support to being built, same kind of infrastructure. How does that amount fair? You could argue all you want. You could argue all you want.
I have a question. On Regatta Way, there was one house built up the.
The record's closed, we can't. You can't ask questions about other things, new information.
I, okay, so I'm trying to figure out how we could, or what kind of example we could use to illustrate our rules about LIDs. In, say, for instance, Rhodes End, you know, we don't have any sidewalks anywhere in Rhodes End. Everybody talks about wanting a sidewalk on Logan. So perhaps, you know, if you have infill development on some of these side streets, you know, that never will have sidewalks or need, require sidewalks, then on LID, we might form an LID. And we would do this ideally ahead of time so we know when the next infill development comes in, you know, exactly what they would, oh, what part of that, to put a sidewalk along Logan. And so everybody in Rhodes End would be contributing, even those on the side street who don't own Logan, would be contributing something to the, what everybody thinks is the important sidewalk, the one on Logan. Now, if eventually, you know, 40, 50 years from now, there's additional development, and we find that we want a sidewalk that leads from Logan to the villages at Cascade Head property. Head property, then, you know, it may be that those owners then would also, you know, if they live on, on Salacy and, near Logan, that they might be asked to participate a second time in, in that project. But again, you know, every time you do an LID, you have to structure it so that you can show that you're, what, what cost you're doing, what, what the benefit there will be, and describing the benefit for each property owner based on how far away they are from the improvement, or the size of their property, or, you know, some, on some criteria. And that's all part of the process in developing an LID. So, to make sure that it, it is fair.
One quick question about clarification in, in the rule. Does, is the city going to ask property owners, or are they going to tell property owners?
Which choice they get, fees in lieu or defer?
Yeah, is there a choice? Can we say, "I don't want to participate, I don't care if there's a sidewalk"?
Oh.
There's a requirement in the code to build the improvement.
Yes.
And if you're...
For the property owner or for the city?
For the property owner. So, this is, the deferred improvement agreement is saying, we'll allow you, we'll agree, the city will agree to allow you not to build it at this time. You're required to build it. Put the sidewalk and curb in front of your property. You're allowed to now, the city may agree to allow you to defer if it makes sense. What we're saying is the city may also allow you to do a fee in lieu. So, it's not the property owner's choice. It doesn't say the property owner shall be given the option to do one, two, or three based upon his own, you know, personal feelings. He, he has to agree with the city. The city is the one that's, if the city doesn't agree that you can defer, you build it. If the city doesn't agree, you can do a fee in lieu, you can't do a fee in lieu. I think that, you know, LIDs are out there, they're a very rational process. First, you identify a project, well, first, the city can initiate it, or, or people can petition to do an LID. The first step is to identify the project. And then, as Deborah said, then we can build the project and then allocate among the benefited property owners all or part of the cost. With the fee in lieu, as Deborah stated, the, the city engineer said what they'd like to do is identify projects and, and base the fee in lieu on identified projects. So, you, the, the idea is if you pay a fee in lieu, you're paying for this project, the sidewalk from here to here. You, if an LID comes in and it's for that exact same improvement, well, then obviously you're not going to be assessed. But if an LID comes in and it's for a different improvement, again, it's based on the project. So, I don't think you're going to have the situation where you're being assessed twice for the same improvement. There are, there are provisions in the LID ordinance for reassessment in case there's a problem, and for deficiencies assessments and things like that, but that's not really what we're here to do. I think that where we are right now, as you're making a recommendation to the council, and one of the things that's come up is, should we have this fee in lieu be all you have to pay, or should it, should it be a credit toward that improvement? I think it, it's fine to give that recommendation, I just think it needs to be specific to whatever project you're paying for. So, you pay fee in lieu, it doesn't necessarily get you off the hook for an LID that is for something else.
Does that clarify? Any, is there a motion to forward a recommendation to the city council?
Well, we still haven't decided. The basic question that Patty brought up, a couple of you brought up, is the fee in lieu is fixed and you're done with it when you've paid it, or if the project somehow gets redefined, or is excessively, or is quite a bit more expensive, or even less expensive than it started, should you be either assessed more or refunded?
Well, I think, do we need a motion that would address that?
Right, the, I don't think we've settled amongst ourselves which way we would like to go with that one.
I kind of feel this, is there a consensus for, you know, having some kind of credit? I would go for that.
I didn't hear the last, some kind of credit?
Yeah. You get credit for the fee in lieu if the cost of the project at some point in the future is higher than what you, your fee was.
Well, I certainly think you would get credit for what you paid, but if the cost of the project is way higher, should, should you get a free ride for the difference in cost?
Sure.
...................................................................................................
Is there a second?
I second that.
May we have a roll call vote, please, Ken?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Crowen?
Yes.
Bryson?
Yes.
Slessinger?
Yes.
Kier?
Yes.
And Griffiths?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right. No old business?
Mr. Chair, so that was a motion just for one part of it?
Now, do you want to remember that?
Need an overall recommendation for the rest of the amendments?
I'm sorry, I missed what you said. So, we need to, we need a motion to forward this recommendation to the city council.
I'd allow a motion that we forward this recommendation as, with the inclusion that we've modified it to, to the city council.
Is there a second?
No, a second.
May we have a roll call vote, please?
Crowen?
Yes.
Bryson?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Slessinger?
Yes.
Kier?
Yes.
And Griffiths?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. No old business, and we do have some new business, and that's the new ordinance for appointed boards and committees.
Richard, that must be you?
Yeah. I'm not going to go through the ordinance, but I'll answer your questions. Essentially, there were a couple reasons for doing this ordinance. One was, we actually had a lawsuit where two of you were actually challenged as to your appointment. There was an allegation that we appointed you through a secret ballot, which wasn't actually the case. The council used nomination process using ballots, and then the motion to make the appointments. But we, we corrected that by going back and reappointing the planning commissioners. But one of the reasons why there was some disparity was there was a, a council-approved process for a resolution or, or order, where they said, "This is how we're going to fill vacancies on our, our appointed boards and commissions." And they had this, a couple of years ago, process that they had voted on, but it wasn't in the code. So, I am very adverse to, you know, approving things and saying, "This is how we're going to run things," and not having it in the code. And it causes conflicts, and it did in, in this case. So, we installed, I wrote it, and the council adopted, the, the process for going through background checks and, and interviewing people that want to be on appointed boards and commissions. So, that's one of the reasons why this ordinance exists. We wanted to lay out what that process was, flesh it out, and if there was any discrepancies with other ordinances, we wanted to make sure they were addressed. So, for example, while it says that, you know, councilors can conduct individual interviews, it says, except for the planning commission, you're going to be interviewed before the full council. And that's just to recognize that there's differences between some of these committees. But there's also a lot of similarities between the, the boards and committees that the council has. So, one of the things I did was go to a small chapter, which was our uniform procedures, which only had two things in it, about quorum, I think, and went and put there all the things that were similar between all the different boards and commissions. So, one of the things that, like, every board and commission and committee had was the ability to adopt their own rules for governing their business. So, I didn't need that in the code fifteen times. It just needed to be in the code once, in the chapter that governed all boards and commissions. So, we deleted fourteen things and moved one and just put it in chapter, in, in this chapter, title two. So, that's just an example of what we did. It's, as regards the planning commission, we really didn't change too much. We just took out a couple of those redundant provisions that are addressed in the general procedures that are applicable to everyone. There is also in the statute another difference for the planning commission, that removal of the planning commissioner can't just be, you know, "We decide to remove you, we actually have to have a hearing and have a reason." So, that's actually provided for, so that while the council could remove someone on the arts committee without really having a reason for a planning commissioner, they have to go through a process. And so, that's recognized. So, that's it. The council took about three months to get through this ordinance, but probably because they had so much on the agenda, they kept getting it postponed, so.
Any questions for Richard about that?
Are we, do we have to take any action on this, or just...
No, this is just for your information.
Okay.
I'm just a bit curious, why was the new business incubation in...
Well, because it hasn't been used, and it's basically been replaced with, I guess, a department. Well, no, it's not the citizen involvement, it's, it's actually the staff, there's economic development staff essentially now, and so the business incubation really had to do with office space downstairs, and it just hasn't been used, hasn't been staffed for years. So, I asked the council if they wanted to keep it, and they said, "No."
And the city comes up with some idea to try to expand the economic face of the city, it would be handled through the staff?
Yeah, economic development staff.
Great, thank you, Richard. All right, we do, we'll be seeing a film tonight, short film, as part of our planning commission training. I think that is next on the agenda.
Is it short?
Like an hour and a half?
All right, this is the beach bill, and it's the 50th anniversary of the beach bill, and that's why we are showing it to you today. It's a good...
The Oregon coast is like none other in the world. It is an ecological haven found nowhere else. A place where pristine beaches harbor families building memories and beckon those seeking solitude. It is a wondrous treasure, and it is accessible to all.
It's priceless. Recreation free of charge, beauty free of charge, there's art right out there, and oh woe to those who lose it.
New Jersey and many of the New England states, there is private ownership extending from the upland down across the beach and the shore to low tide, and owners have the right to petition that off.
Go to Malibu, go to the east coast, and find how difficult it is to get to their beaches.
And I can't imagine running into a fence that said, "I can't go any further." And we take a very different approach that says, "No, this is really special, and it should be special for everybody, and we want to make sure that everybody has access to it."
But in the 1960s, private developers along the coast began challenging a cherished Oregon tradition.
It brings to the public's attention the situation that poses the threat of access to the beaches of the state of Oregon. We were comfortable in the feeling that the beaches belonged to the public.
But did they? The question captured the soul of Oregon and became the hottest issue of the 1967 legislative session.
We're at a crossroads in, in, in Oregon in regard to our beaches, and if the legislature turns its back on passing this needed legislation, you won't recognize the Oregon coast four years from now.
I don't know that any other issue could ever raise Oregon like I would. It, yes, you know, people would never went to the coast, were strongly for or against, but overwhelming for it. And those that opposed it had some very good reasons.
This is a story of passion, commitment, and the vision that the beaches of Oregon were a birthright of generations to come. Funding for Oregon experience is provided by the James F. and Marion L. Miller Foundation, the Ann and Bill Swindell's Charitable Trust, the Oregon Cultural Trust, and for viewers like you. In the summer of 1966, Oregonians and tourists flocked to the Oregon coast. It was no different from any other year, or was it?
Our family had been going to the Cana Beach area in the Colson House for as long as I could remember, and the whole family got down there together.
Larry Biddy was a graduate student in biochemistry at the University of Oregon Medical School. He remembers what happened to his aunt one afternoon at the beach.
Someone confronted her and said, "Well, this is private beach here, you can't walk through here." She came back and said, "They just kicked me off the beach to surf San Motel," and I said, "Huh?" So, I went down and confronted the people at the motel, and what they were telling me at the motel was counter to everything I had known and believed, was Oregon. I went back and wrote a letter to Secretary of State Tom McCall, asking for an explanation. What constitutes the ownership of a beach? And have we been misled all of these years that in fact the upland owner does own the beaches? You know, what's happening here?
Oregonians have been coming to the coast for generations. It was a recreational mecca. Most assumed the public owned the beach all the way to the vegetation line. That's because Oregon had enjoyed a long tradition of public access to its shores, largely because of geography.
It's a very rugged environment with the ocean on one side, and sandy beaches with headlands coming down to the sea, and for people that were settling the coast, it was very difficult to travel north and south.
Native Americans traveled the dry sandy beaches when trading or gathering food.
And eventually, as Europeans moved in, the settlers moved in, they were also needing to transport goods and connect their community with others, and so they're walking the sands, hiking around these headlands, later with horses, and then wagons, and later automobiles, until they came to these headlands. And as we can see from the waves today, it was a challenge to get around these points when the tide was in.
At Hug Point, settlers blasted away the rock so wagons could travel above high tide.
You had to hug the point, or you were going to get wet or worse.
In fact, from the time of statehood, Oregon owned and managed the tidelands, the wet sands washed daily by the tides. But in the late 1800s, the state began selling the land.
Those tidelands were being sold by the legislature to the upland owner, the person who owned the shoreland. And up until about 1913, almost thirty miles of those tidelands had been sold section by section.
And that disturbed... And that disturbed a young governor named Oswald West.
He had a cabin on the north coast, and I presume that that, his personal relationship with the ocean shore and the beaches is what caused him to realize that this is not a good public thing to be happening.
I drafted a simple bill declaring the seashore from the Washington line to the California line a public highway. I pointed out that thus we would come into miles and miles of highway without cost to the taxpayer.
The beaches were central to transportation. They really were a public highway. And to sell them off and privatize them would be to clearly thwart the public's need for transportation up and down the coast.
From that point on, the tidelands were protected from private development. But there was a flaw in Governor West's bill.
It wasn't until much later that we realized that while that's all fine and good, it really didn't include the dry sand portion of the beach that we all think of as the beach that we use for recreation and for other activities.
Some fifty years later, coastal property owners like motel owner William Hay began questioning the public's use of their beachfront property.
He took the position that the dry sands were not in the ownership of the state of Oregon and that the people who lived along the beach owned dry sand. As a matter of fact, some of them did in their deeds.
There had been development down on the beach in Lincoln City and other places. People knew what they were doing and had developed the motels right down smack on the beach.
The coastal rumblings coming from developers and concerned citizens sparked an investigation by the Parks Department, then part of the Highway Commission.
We took that issue to the chairman of the Highway Commission, Glenn Jackson, and he said, "Wow, this is bigger than we are. We need to take it to the legislature." Two bills were drafted by our attorneys, and in their research, they discovered that the state of Texas had just recently passed an open beaches law, which said in essence, doesn't make any difference who owns it, the public has used it so long, they cannot be denied the use any longer.
House Bill 1601 modeled on the concept of common law was introduced into the 1967 legislature, giving the public recreational rights or easements to the dry sandy beaches all the way to the vegetation line. The Highway Commission would protect those rights.
The bill was assigned to a committee that was made up of eleven members. It was seven to four Republican. The Republicans had a good majority in the House at that time. First, it was a geographical split. It was rural and the coast against the urban area environmental legislators. It became very divisive as they began to look at it.
Early on, the conservative Republicans decided that this had become a property rights issue and they wanted to kill the bill.
The bill allows that the state highway commission can bring suit against beachfront property owners without compensation for the loss of the rights of their property, but the beachfront property owner would retain the right to pay the taxes in the title. I think this is an unfair way to go, and I think the bill needs to be amended to allow some compensation.
I think most of us figured the private property owners and their very strong lobbies in the legislature would take care of themselves. The issue is, who would protect the public interest in it?
At first, most Oregonians were blissfully unaware of the bill's existence, or indeed, what was at stake that summer. Larry Biddy knew about the bill, but began to worry as the session progressed.
We had gone too long to hear anything. So I made the phone call, got ahold of Sid Bassett, and he said, "Well, I'm holding the last hearing I can hold today. There's no interest in this."
Grants pass Republican Sid Bassett was the committee chair. Bassett supported the bill, but lacked the votes to move it out.
Well, I think he realized he couldn't move it. He wouldn't get it killed. They didn't have the votes to kill it in committee, or they didn't have the votes to pass it out. It was just stuck there.
And I said, "Well, if I can get a letter down here, can I get some letters and you can hold another hearing?" And he said, "Well, I can sure try. No guarantee." I told people what was going on at the school, and they said, "Oh, you have to get ahold of Dr. Bacon because he is a big ecologist. He's going to want to see this."
I was very interested in the Oregon coast because it was an extraordinary system biologically. So that concerned me that there might not be access of the public. Thought, gee whiz, maybe we should do something about this and see what's going on, if there's anything going on in Salem.
In 1967, Dr. Bob Bacon was a professor of anatomy at the medical school in Portland. He'd never been active in politics, but agreed to drive to the Capitol the following Monday.
We went to the bill room to ask about a bill concerning Oregon beaches.
And they said, "There's no beach bill here." And the people at the counter said, "We don't have anything like it."
But there was another clerk there who apparently overheard this and came on and said, "Yes, there was." The only type for that cluster was concerning public rights and land. And the clerk said also that he thought they had just had their last hearing, but Mr. Bassett was probably down still in the hearing room. He welcomed us when we introduced ourselves and told them what this was all about. He was really, just seemed delighted. He said, "This is the first indication of the general interest of the public in this matter that we've had. The only people we've had in here are developers and motel owners and others who may have very specific private profit interests on the beaches."
Bassett asked the visitors to return that afternoon. When they did, he introduced them to committee members and announced his intention of holding additional hearings.
They all turned around and looked at us. It was obviously, they didn't like what they heard, to say the least.
He asked us essentially to get enough public interest that he could keep this issue alive and maybe get it before the legislature.
The interesting thing about Sid was that he was a very conservative Republican and would be considered by the property rights people to be right in their camp. And here he wasn't.
Suddenly, he became an ally of the preservationists, the conservationists, the environmentalists, the liberal press, the whole nine yards, all wound up in the same boat with Sid Bassett. It was kind of a strange combination, and as a reporter, it was delightful to watch it unfold.
That was the big turning point. I mean, that was, if he hadn't been willing to do that, that'd been the end of the whole thing. No question.
In the meantime, newly elected Governor Tom McCall had been watching the floundering legislation with growing agitation. McCall wanted the bill and sent a message to House leadership strongly urging legislative action. About the same time, State Treasurer Bob Straub called a press conference.
I know Governor McCall is not, I know that I am not, I know that other supporters of this bill are not interested in abusing private property rights. But the public playground area is on the dry sand section of the beach, and this is what's being threatened by a few, by a very few commercial developers down on the coast.
Tom McCall jumped into it. Treasurer Bob Straub jumped into it. Secretary of State Clay Myers came along, and you had the three top state officers beginning to lobby for the bill. And when that happened, it was a story that couldn't possibly be ignored.
House Bill 1601 was suddenly front page news.
Everyone was writing about it, but Matt Kramer from AP really did the first major stories on it. He spotted that bill before most of the rest of us did.
He nicknamed it the beach bill and said, "We must pass this." And I think every newspaper in Oregon was yelling at the legislature to get that bill passed and no amendments.
The big break for the bill really came when Ansel Payne, who was the general manager at KGW at that time, did a very strong editorial supporting the beach bill.
He got a photograph of Haystack Rock and had an artist draw fences down to the water on the photograph and put that on the screen. He said essentially, "If you don't want this to happen in Oregon, get in touch with your legislators." And they did by the thousands.
Hearing rooms, once empty, were now standing room only.
Sid Bassett came into the assembly hearings with bushel baskets full of letters and telegrams. And at the end of the whole thing, he said that the figure amounted up to somewhere between thirty and thirty-five thousand letters and telegrams that had come in those hearings. That was the largest public response to any legislative issue ever in history.
To shore up firm support, Bacon and Biddy formed the organization Citizens to Save Oregon Beaches, threatening an initiative petition if the legislature failed to act.
I'd traveled the state, and I would dash off particularly on weekends, give talks to churches and schools and on local radio stations, whatever, all up and down the valley.
But the beach bill remained stalled in committee.
They knew that they had to pass a bill. If they knew that they could not pass a bill, that would take people's property away.
Okay, let's save the beach for the public. Where does that saving stop?
The bill still refers to a vegetation line, and I think that it's going to be a problem in the courts to determine where a vegetation line is on the coast, and beachfront property owners and those involved are fearful of that designation.
And then people began to try to equate it with some arbitrary number, like five hundred feet from the high tide line or two hundred feet from the high tide line.
The amendments were flying all over the place.
The tone and the temper and the objective of the amendments is to shrink the public interest on the beach and to enlarge the private interest. I think that these amendments have adopted would be a real sellout of the public right to enjoyment of the beach, and I hope that this committee will very firmly and very sternly reject these amendments.
I think it's a matter of tremendous importance that this be resolved as soon as possible. It may involve the Supreme Court of the state of Oregon. But in any event, we must fight to reestablish, in fact, in the most meaningful way, the concept of the public ownership of our beaches established by that great Oregonian Oz West some fifty to fifty-five years ago. This we cannot live without as Oregonians.
On May 13th, 1967, Governor McCall traveled by helicopter to several north coast beaches with an entourage of legislators and scientists. The goal? To find the boundary between public and private once and for all.
The man was remarkable. I can't think of any other figure in Oregon who could have stepped out of that helicopter with a sand blowing and all that dramatic stuff. I mean, he was just, he was a showman.
Well, it was good theater, and it was constructive as well. He was using the talents and the skill and knowledge of people at Oregon State University who specialized in oceanography and the wills and ways of that science.
Surveyors staked out three beaches at different elevation levels above high tide, including the log, vegetation, and cliff lines, all being debated in the bill. The stakes demonstrated how big the public beach would be if defined at that point. McCall emerged from the odyssey with his own line drawn in the sand at sixteen feet above sea level.
He realized, as shrewd as he was about media, that if he could do something like that, he could further jack up public interest in this, and they could have a good chance of getting a decent bill out.
I knew what Tom McCall does best, and that was go to that beach and raise hell. And he wanted that bill passed.
That same weekend, James Redden and colleagues began crafting a bipartisan solution.
I just took the position that this bill could pass and do what we wanted it to do if we just went into zoning, like you do in every city, in every town, in every suburb, where you can't build a fence across your front lawn unless it's wood and anybody agrees, and you give up some of your rights to your property because of the zone to prevent the property from going downhill.
The bill protected both the public's access to the beaches and private property owners. They wouldn't be liable for taxes on beach areas used by the public or any injuries that might occur. The Highway Commission would police and maintain the property.
No genius about it, but that was a perfect way to resolve this ownership versus control.
You had unlikely people joining in common causes. You had collegiality in the legislature. It was a positive competition.
The passage by the House today of the controversial beach bill culminated several weeks of fewer that strained relations between the governor's office and the Legislative Assembly, almost to the breaking point. The bill is expected to make a fast run through the Senate and end up on the desk of Governor Tom McCall within a week.
Everyone by that time was, "Let's pass this bill."
Governor McCall signed the beach bill on July 6th, 1967, calling it "one of the most far-reaching measures of its kind in the nation." But it was passed only as a stopgap measure. The bill called for an aerial survey of the entire coast to give the next legislature more precise data for a permanent zoning line. Today, that line is approximately sixteen feet above sea level.
It's the beach zone line beyond which the public has a right to use and beyond which the upland owner who owns it may not build or improve.
The fact that they used the sixteen-foot elevation, which was an approximation of a vegetation line, set the state in a position of saying, "We believe," or can be interpreted, "this is the boundary of the shore."
But that wasn't the end of the story. Coastal developers immediately challenged the beach bill in Clatsop County Circuit Court, and that had the Straub camp worried because no one knew how the courts would rule. They proposed an initiative that would lock the public's recreational rights to the beaches in the state constitution and provide a one cent a gallon gasoline tax to buy private beach property if needed.
We had ninety thousand signatures to gather, and in those days, initiative petitions were always volunteer efforts. And we did all sorts of things that we could think to do. But we did collect some ninety or more thousand signatures in six weeks.
This measure that will now be voted on in November is a thirty million dollar bond issue that will be used to develop the recreational resources of the Oregon coast and preserve the Oregon beaches for public use forever. The average cost to the average car user will be from five to seven dollars a year for four years, and I think that this is a cost most of us in Oregon are willing to pay.
In fact, early polling showed Measure Six passing by a large margin.
Unbeknownst to us, we were the target of a campaign by, essentially by a lobbyist for the gas companies.
That was one of the last of Ken Rinkey's masterful campaigns. Rinkey was the Karl Rove of the day. He really understood how to politic to a base. And the base in this case was people who may not have paid a lot of attention to the issue, but they knew for sure they didn't want to pay a higher tax. And he played them beautifully.
He had a slogan in his pocket, and his slogan was, "Beware the pricks in Measure Six."
That jingle. They put it to music, and they had all this money to play it over and over and over and over again. People went and doubt vote no, and they voted no.
Measure Six went down big.
Oh my, it would have been a wonderful bargain had it happened. We would have, it would have been a very wise decision in retrospect to have done it.
The failure of Measure Six focused attention back on the beach bill. Its fate now in the hands of the Oregon Supreme Court. In 1969, the justices ruled unanimously that the public had a right to use the dry sandy beaches for recreational purposes because they'd done so for generations.
But it was challenged after it came from the Oregon Spring Court, was challenged in the federal court by Mr. Hay, and finally, the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals affirmed the Oregon Supreme Court's decision.
Today, the beach bill stands as a gift to all Oregonians.
The fact that we've made a very strong statement as a state that the beach is available to everyone gives us a responsibility to make sure that we manage the upland and that we manage the offshore area so that it doesn't destroy the beach experience.
I don't know what's in it. Yeah, that's right. It's been years since I even touched these things.
There it is. Okay, the original 1601, April 11th, all I wanted, and what Bob Bacon wanted, and those of us, was to get in and put something permanent in. those of us, was to get in and put something permanent that would defend the maximum public rights. That was our goal.
It was the 60s, and that says a lot by itself, I think. There was a feeling that one could do things and have a cause and maybe be effective in it.
And the more people we get here, the more important the Beach Bill becomes, because we've got to make sure that we maintain that access to the wilds of the ocean.
There's more about the Beach Bill on Oregon Experience Online. To learn more or to order a DVD of the show, visit OPB.org.
There you are.
Thank you for showing that to us. That was excellent.
Inspirational, right?
Except for the one shot of the kid with the baby seal. It was really, really cute. All right, are there any further public comments on non-agenda items from the public? Seeing none. Any comments from staff? Richard?
Nope.
Richard? All right. Deborah?
No.
From commissioners, any questions or comments? What about our next meeting? Any idea what the agenda might be?
Right now, there's nothing on the agenda.
All right. Okay, that said, the meeting is over.